I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and all.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed?
Yes, we got the county perks, April 2021, the quarter of deeds, April 2021, and auditor's revenue and spend to report for April 2021.
Okay, commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got Coal County Communities Thursday morning, we've got our Jefferson City Regional Economic Development Partnership meeting Thursday, East Side Businesses Association meeting Friday morning, Mother's Day is Sunday. About it until next week.
There's a Heartland Port meeting beginning at 9:00 AM this morning that I think I'm going to miss, but they have a quorum, the Union Pacific event this afternoon, and the two things that Jeff mentioned, the Coal County Communities on Thursday and Regional Economic Partnership on Thursday.
Okay, today I got detail lunch to get out. I will give you some coins if you're going to the Union Pacific.
Got them right here.
Okay, okay. Let's see, Wednesday we have a COVID press conference. Meeting in the afternoon. Thursday and Friday is Shelby Pass, so come downtown and look at all the Mustangs and Cobles.
Thought that was last week.
Nope.
This week?
It's this week.
Okay, that would make more sense because they had to car show them down at the lake this last week.
Yeah, and then Monday I've got a Kemp Region Foundation meeting, and that's all like that. Okay, we're going to deviate, and we're going to go to the CARES Act funding first, since they are so important and so busy, and Eric, he can wait, Dave can wait.
Yeah, for me.
Well, thank you, everyone. Julie had a doctor's appointment she had to go to this morning, so it's just me to get CARES all closed out, so very exciting. In front of you, I've got a funding recommendation that'll be kind of the last hurrah for what we need to do to get all the funds closed out, so I'll go ahead and go through that, and then we can kind of chat about the closeout, too. So I've got some vaccine supplies and storage items for $14,780. We had a couple of things to improve some barriers for social distancing for $940. Coveralls for the EMS, that was kind of our last item. You guys have been building that up a little bit to kind of use here at the end as kind of a max out for your funds right there, so that's that number right there. That's not all of it, that's the maximum we can could use for that. I had a little Zoom subscription and then the Health Department payroll.
Do you guys have any questions?
This is the end.
The end of this round of money.
Yes, yes. Then we'll start in on President Biden's money. Okay, I think they said by May 10th, we're supposed to have have.
Yeah, should be coming.
Yeah, so, okay.
I'll offer a motion to approve D-10-17 CARES expenditures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just as kind of a brief overview of the funding and things that you got and how we spent it all. So you guys got the initial award amount of about $9,307,200. You earned interest of about $7,800 on that, and that gave you $9,011,563 to spend. So this report that we will be sending in April will include $514,000 of expenditures, what you've just approved now, and then an additional $300, well, less than $330,000 of kind of some applications that haven't already been approved. So this will close out all your CARES funding, all your CARES have been spent as of now, when we send in that April report, which Chris and I will get together. That is due October the 12th, I believe, so we've got a couple of days to kind of finalize that up, and then we will be done with CARES. So moving on to ARPA, haven't really seen any new guidance on that stuff, so hopefully we'll get a little bit more information, especially since you're going to be getting the money shortly. So they haven't said anything too more specific on what you can spend it on. It's still been pretty generic on kind of the COVID stuff and then maybe some infrastructure things, so just keep kind of thinking about what projects might be working for you, what you guys are going to want to do with that. I mean, you guys can set up assistance programs and things like you've done with CARES and things like that, too, suppose that's something, a direction you want to go, be thinking about that as well. And then Julie wanted me to mention that at the May 18th meeting, we'll be submitting our proposal for services ARPA orders, so be looking for that soon. So I think that's all I have, though.
Teresa, one thing we haven't talked about is reporting for the HHS provider relief. Have you seen any more on it?
Nope, they're still, it's just open for the portal for registration, so I keep, every Monday I pull it up to see what it looks like, and it hasn't changed, so that's something that a lot of people are dealing with in the healthcare industry, trying to get those reported. I mean, nobody wants to be sitting on this for five months now after year end, so yeah, I'll keep, I'll keep looking at it. I'll keep it on my radar, though.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions for Teresa?
No, where's your Royals flags and stuff?
Yep, in the office. Got to bring in my stuff, yeah.
Yeah, we did get just a kind of a general report from Mac on some of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, but it gives us a little bit more, but not, not anything to sink our teeth in yet.
So where's that money going to go? Are we just going to put it in the general account? We have something.
Cheers, partner.
The ARPA money, is that what you're talking about?
Be careful what you ask for.
Spend it.
Oh, sure.
Trust me.
We'll create a separate fund, just like we did for the CARES fund, so that'll be coming.
And any earnings has to be as restricted as just like the principal is, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We have not seen guidance on those investments yet, but we're waiting on it.
It does say we can invest in water surge and broadband infrastructure. Yeah, so. Okay, anything else?
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Okay, we will go back to our agenda, appointment by commission, appointment of Adam Besen to the Coal County Planning and Zoning Commission. Should have had Jeff.
I'll offer a motion to appoint Adam Besen to the Coal County Planning Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Give you this, to appointment of Jeff Helsher to the Coal County Regional Economic Partnership.
I'll offer a motion to appoint Jeff Helsher to the Coal County Regional Economic Partnership, Inc.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay. We're back to presentation from staff consultants and invited guests, David Bangy to present cooperative project proposals. I'm sure they brought them in, because I keep telling them to bring it down.
So we've been working on the sales tax projects for four years now, the current sales tax, and so we're in year five of the current sales tax. If you remember, I don't know, I guess it was last year, the Dunklin Clark intersection got pulled from, from being a project, and so there was that money available, and then the city's also been working through the MSP redevelopment. They've received the EDA grant for that, and so they're working towards a project there as well. So we're in the last year of the sales tax. David was going to explain where the money from Dunklin is going to go, coupled with money that was kind of set aside for MSP. He can explain both those projects, and then Matt would like to discuss the next sales tax. Of course, our sales tax passed last month. Theirs is on the ballot in August. With ours, we have an amount of money committed towards cooperative projects. The city, as they develop their information for theirs, they need to present kind of a rough project list, so Matt wants to discuss that and get commission agreement moving forward. So I'll turn it over to David.
Sure, thanks, Eric. So a couple of things, and what I, the sheets that I just gave you, just the one with the numbers on it, kind of give us a rough breakdown of where the money from this sales tax cycle has gone, and which entity contributed what to those projects, and so we can kind of just go down the list there real quick. Capital Avenue, the city, most of that was paid for with the previous sales tax, but the city kicked in about $175,000 for that. Of course, we evenly split the Merle Avenue and Cavalier Drive projects. The Morris Packaging Rail Spur, the county actually paid for a majority of that out of some previous sales tax money, as well as did the city, but there was $67,000, they got spent out of this sales tax from the county side. The Dunklin Street Bridge, again, pretty much a split there with the city paying a few more dollars with some overruns and stuff on that project, and East McCarty Street, kind of the same thing, or East High Street, I'm sorry. So then, of course, we have Clark and Dunklin, and that's a little handout that I just gave you all. You know, there was a lot of iteration there. There was to be a roundabout built, and then we were going to build roundabouts with some cost share money with the state, and ultimately, those plans all came apart in December of last year. And so actually, at the last council meeting, well, not yes, not last evening, but the two weeks ago, the council agreed to sell the Joshua House Church property, and so that little diagram is showing that in that sale, we've actually retained a portion of that property. We're going to be adding a curb there to improve that site distance at that intersection. There's probably a few other little things that we might do with that as well. We're going to improve the lighting, probably try to take some of the street parking off, again, just to try to improve the site distance as you're coming up Dunklin Street. And so that kind of puts that project to bed. And so that money, basically, there was about a million and a half dollars of additional money that was to go to that project, which now doesn't really have a home. And so what we are proposing is that that money move into the MSP project. So the county and the city, both in the sort of the literature of the sales taxes, had agreed for a million dollars to go from each entity into that project, and so now we're proposing that, you know, there'd basically be a million and a half from each entity that goes into the MSP project. And then on that sheet, then the other project that you see listed is Grant Street, and so I believe that you had a handout about that as well. And so that's a project that we've spoken about, I think the last time I was up here with the commission, interested in doing something on that street to help support the new amphitheater and other improvements that are happening at the park. And so we've designed that project, basically, it would include a sidewalk and a street overlay over the majority of the street with a slight rebuild as you enter the park to add a splitter island and some possibilities for some lighting and landscaping in that area. And so that project, we're estimating it to be about $650,000. The Parks plans on putting in some money for that, but, you know, in this layout of the split of the money, the county is a little behind in terms of the amounts of money that they've spent versus the amount of money the city has spent. The city's spent basically $4 million of their 5.5, where the county has spent about 3.4, and so if there were to be $550,000, we're proposing of county money that goes into the Grant Street project, and then essentially 1.5 million from the city and the county to go into MSP, then that would essentially get us to basically, you know, with some rounding, to the full 5.5 that each entity has committed to these joint city-county projects. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. Eric and I have kind of traded some emails about some potential agreement language for those projects, but we wanted to have this discussion first before we, you know, kind of finalized any of those items.
Yeah, I've been talking to Councilman David Kemna on Grant Street, and, you know, we, we go by that every day. There's a lot of traffic that uses that street now, and when that amphitheater opens, it's going to be even more congested, so.
Right, and so the project itself, the street as it stands currently is 30, 31 feet wide, and so to widen it any more than that is really not possible. You know, the houses, as you get closer to the creek, actually creep forward towards the street, and so actually, the house at 92 Grant Street, the front door will be nine feet from the sidewalk, so that's pretty close. And so, you know, trying to make that street wider is, is not really in the cards, we don't believe, but certainly we can make the whole area look quite a bit better. You know, it's somewhat overgrown, and so with the addition of that sidewalk, will be some retaining walls and certainly the ability to make that look nicer, you know, and be maintained easier, you know, into the long term. So I think with some of those things, that the street will actually appear to be wider and perhaps nicer in that it's, it can be more easily maintained, so.
Will you change parking on the street at all, or?
It's not our intention to do so, except but for the part that's in the park, where we're proposing there to be that splitter island. The parking wouldn't, of course, go away there, but in terms of in front of the houses along Grant Street, we would intend to leave the parking as it is.
At an earlier meeting, there was a comment, I think, about the difficulty of doing Grant Street. Everything on the east side is, the elevation is an issue, is that?
Right, the east side, for the most part, is a, is solid rock, and so particularly, as you get down near the creek, you know, the, the, the rock rises from about two feet behind the curb, straight up. There's a little church that's tucked in there, and again, its driveways are pretty steep upward, and that's, you know, to sort of get above the rock ledge that's there. So going that direction would be, you know, very expensive in terms of trying to, you know, blast out that rock and then accommodate the entrances into that church, if it were to be widened in that direction.
Yeah, so, and certainly David can explain this as well, but, you know, so we met with Parks and talked to them about, you know, the use of the park and how it's going to function, and went through all that, and I think they, you know, they think majority of their traffic flow and how they're going to park and everything was going to come up to Riverside, and they're going to try to use some parking up there, and they have some longer term plans to develop the park with more parking in it even. And that's, that's fluid, of course, but, you know, if you're from out of town, you know, it may be that you take that other street to get there anyway, and so I think, I know Jeff has been on some of these conversations, too, as we talked about, you know, once we get MSP going, to look at that whole connection from MSP then along Capitol Riviera, I always get this mixed up, Riviera, Riverside, three different names there, all the way up to the park and how that, that drive will function a little better. And then, you know, this, this is, Parks was really liking this idea. This is where they're going to kick in about 100 grand on this deal, and, and get this, it's shaded in green here, basically, we're going to rebuild that, widen it, and that, that helps them, you know, you have a person, if you have a person maybe standing out in the street, kind of directing traffic or taking tickets or whatever, you know, they could kind of hide in that median and direct people. Their VIP parking is down here, though, so this would be their like secondary entrance, and they would, they would route you over towards the pool area, ball fields, and you can then walk in the back, but you have to have a special ticketing for that, at lot is the way I understand it. And so that's, that's where they're kind of looking at, you know, trying to do that. And then, you know, we looked at the, you know, the traffic will flow, we got two lanes there, so it's going to flow nicely back out of there, but it's like any event, it's going to be congested, but, you know, if you try to add a third lane, you know, what's it really do for you? Probably not a lot, but it costs a whole lot of money. You've got to take out a bunch of houses on one side or buy out a church on the other side and a bunch of, bunch of rock cuts, so we didn't feel that was probably the best use of that, but this would, this would get you a long way. We get our sidewalk on there we've never had. We've applied for grants in the past multiple times, trying to get grants to just put a sidewalk in before the amphitheater, I'd say even, and so, you know, if you're a kid in the neighborhood, that way you can get to the swimming pool or whatever. So I think that's a really nice feature of this, and, but anyway, just wanted to throw that out there about the Parks, talking to the Parks, how they think it's going to function and everything.
And at some later time, you see improvement to Riverside?
I do, you know, the, obviously, I know David and his crew have been working with the, I guess I'm, if you can hear me on this, folks are already, you know, the old shoe factory there, we were talking about how to get a Greenway extension in there, split the cost with them on that, and then kind of straighten all that mess out as you go up the hill, and, you know, you kind of have an odd intersection there with the state lots, figure that out, then it becomes no curb and gutter, and so you're going to have people walking there, more than likely, you know, they'll park aways and have to walk in there, so again, another, probably another need there, need to work with Parks to figure out exactly what that looks like. I think, you know, they're having some of these events here, and they're going to figure out a lot of things as they go, and where people are going to park and where they're not going to park, and how they're going to try to get to this place, you know, are they going to park somewhere off in the neighborhood, try to walk in or something like that, I don't know, hopefully not, but you got the gardens coming on later, that's a long-term plan, though. But, you know, those things, they get a grant or get something to spur them, and they get moving, but same with MSP, once we get that, you know, when I get ready to talk about mine, you'll notice there's no MSP money in there anymore, so this would be a really big deal if we could accomplish this with this grant and get kind of MSP moved off of the sales tax list and start knocking on some of these others, and there's probably money in the sales tax if everybody agrees that that's what would be a good project in the next cycle to kind of even jump and do some of those things, some of those categories, and work on that Riviera, Riverside area, so.
Thank you.
I would just add, we've been talking about MSP for several years, over 10 years at least.
Fifteen.
It would be fantastic to get that going and get it off of this list and move on to other things, and it's a, and David and Matt have been working hard with the, with the grant and developing what the infrastructure going into that site would look like, and I don't know if we want to talk a little more about that.
And you've got, you've got the little diagram of the MSP site, and so the grant, the EDA grant that we applied for was a, of course, there were several iterations of that, but in the end, we ended up with $1.5 million in grant money for this project. And so there was, we were basically matching that 50%, so we had a, you know, $1.5 million that was going into it from city-county monies, and so we figured that that would take care of the construction of what's shown in red in the drawing, as well as the, what's shown in green, and then at the same time, we would be looking at flattening and developing the blue areas for the future commercial sites. And so once the Clark and Dunklin project went away, then we began to look, well, we have other commitments in terms of the, the overall plan for the redevelopment of the site, and that included what's shown in yellow. And so with the infusion of the money from Clark and Dunklin, we think that we can also then get the Yellow Road built, which is a little bit more difficult than the rest, because there's going to need to be some retaining walls and other things to make up that grade. But ultimately, if that were to be able to happen, then we think that we've fulfilled our commitment to the state in terms of what we committed to building at the MSP site when the state gave us that property. And so like Eric said, then we can kind of move past, you know, MSP, we wouldn't necessarily have to, you know, to focus our efforts on that into the future if we can get this done now.
So I've got this question on that, though. We're going to build the road before the construction of all the other buildings and stuff. I think that's been a concern all along, as we put these roads in, they get tore up a lot of times whenever the actual construction and demolition and excavation and stuff, so is there something that I guess would hold the contractors to the power to fix it, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we have a timeline for all of the construction of those buildings versus the construction of the roads just yet. I mean, that's still kind of an open question, and I know that the legal folks are working with the development folks and, you know, where that, where that all stands, I'm not entirely for sure, but certainly understands, you know, that we wouldn't want to have a brand-new street with brand-new pavement, and then we waller around on it with, you know, vehicles and trucks and tracks and.
That's what I'm bringing up again, and just keep that in mind.
Yeah, we're trying to inch them both forward at the same time.
Which one goes first?
Yeah, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, right? You know, got to have access and utilities and all this other stuff going on in there, but.
I'm fine putting the road in as long as somebody's responsible for it, if they mess it up to come back and fix it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, you know, we can leave off the surface if it ends up being asphalt and those kind of things, or they tear it up, but, but yeah, with that, all the grades got to work out with the adjoining buildings, too, so that's the other thing. You've got to kind of have a designer going at the same time, and, and, you know, CNPS has been very involved with these developers, and so they do know of those grades and things, but, and I'm sure they're not exactly set, but the, so we're working with the grant folks from the feds, trying to get the answer, how, how can we have continuity of design here, or do we have to, you know, include, you know, all the minority stuff and all this other stuff that comes in with these federal grants and that, and so we're still got questions out to them about that, so we're working through that.
Okay, and on the Dunklin Clark one, is that other little entrance exit that's kind of up there in the corner, is that going away? Did you say that's going away, or?
I, you know, I could answer that, so. So this has been an interesting project, so it's kind of iterations of it, if you will. So David's done, and his crew done a good job of figuring out all the site distance and everything to try to flip the left turn to the stop sign where it's now prohibited. So the discussion with the council, we're almost there, not quite. We ad hoc take some parking off, then we'd still be a little shy and things of that nature, but we're getting close enough that, does the council want to finally quit spending money here in the county, too? Obviously, you're involved in this in some, some fashion as well, but do we want to quit spending money, and is it going to be good enough, and people, but now, from an engineering standpoint, we got to tell you what the site distance is, but you want to allow a design exception for, you know, if you're a bit shy there or not. You know, people do it already, and it's, it's going to be much improved when we're done, and so we'll just have to see the temperature about taking a little additional parking off, how close we actually get, and we can, you know, step through that as well, kind of iteratively. I hate to get out in front of that too far and say, yeah, it's going away, you know, it's, it's, it's likely that it could go away.
And so there's, we did, as part of the agreement for the purchase or the sale of the property to the Joshua House, there's some language in that agreement that would, would look into the future, and if they, if anything were to happen on the adjoining property, we would have the ability to then take, get a piece there as well. If that were to happen, you know, then ultimately, with the removal of the parking on the street, we could actually get there. So, I mean, there is a way that we can get there, it just might take some more time.
I think that intersection within the intersection was part of our problem, and there's not as much traffic there now, so it's not that big a deal. I was just curious if that was going away, so that's still in the talks, so.
Yeah, we certainly hope that in the future that we can.
What you're alluding to, do they know that, you know, the church has told us they would like to acquire the property next to them. I mean, it's no secret, they've been working on it. I don't think they've got there yet, but if they were to get it, then, then the agreement says you're going to have to slice us off another piece of the pie there and create a little better site distance yet, and so we're hopeful they do end up with it, or, you know, right now it's in a kind of a code enforcement issue state, so there's some, you know, there's some movement on the property, hopefully that'll go one way or the other, but there, there looks to be a good opportunity there if they can get ahold of it.
And I think you answered my question on the Grand Street. You all put the islands in there, and I was kind of curious when parking is a premium, as much as it is why you'd have them in there, but for taking tickets, directing traffic and such, it makes sense, so we've talked about this possibly for the H tax, but we'll get to this sooner than later, so that's, it was something we talked about from the beginning, so good deal.
And you're thinking you could have this out this summer, as long as we got a few little easements to fall in place, but we could be working on this this summer?
By the way it sounds, that place is going to be packed.
We're going to dodge the events, though, you know, and all that, so it's going to be a little messy.
I think so.
Yeah, I think.
And you can do that for $550,000?
With the additional thousand coming from the Parks.
A hundred thousand.
What did I say?
Thousand, yeah.
As easy as.
Okay, okay.
You've still got to present it to them, right? To Parks, or is it's already been? So, so you're the first on the Grand Street, so we got probably two more stops, so we have, so we're, you know, we're kind of like the, like a pinball machine. You know, we come up here, we go back. come up here, we go back there, and, you know, then come back. But, so the Parks Commission, we got to get there okay. You know, we've talked to the director, of course, but not the commission. And then, then the, we got to, after this discussion today, we've got to go back to the Public Works Committee at the city and the council and say, okay, this is what we found out at the commission. And seems like, you know, we're in agreement or we're not, and get their input. And hopefully, all that falls into place. So, I mean, you guys are, it sounds like you're on board with Grand Street. So.
Yeah, just keep us informed. I keep asking, you know, like every, every quarter, you ought to come give us an update. So August is three months. Come give us an update, too, because, you know, we don't like surprises.
Sure.
You know, if it goes over, we need to know.
Sure.
So, just real quick, on these two projects, MSP and Grant, we will have to do a cooperative agreement between us and the city. We can work out the legal stuff on that and bring that to you at a later date. And I can just do that with, David and Matt don't necessarily have to come for that. But I guess, right now, just in general, are you in agreement with the two projects moving forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Fantastic.
You have our blessing.
We may need that agreement on MSP for our grant, you know, thing we got to submit to the, whoever they are, the EDAs.
And so, we actually, yes, they were interested in that agreement because I guess we, you know, had listed that money as part of the funding to cover the grant. And so, we probably would want to push for it on that.
Pretty soon, we'll bring those agreements to you, within the next few weeks.
I think Grand Street would be a typical, we could bid it, get the final number, say, once you're in agreement.
Yeah.
Our people are in agreement.
We'll work through those things and bring it to you within the next few weeks. But sooner rather than later on getting those going.
And they're running the projects.
Yes.
And we're riding the deck. It's our part of it.
Yes.
Because we've done them differently. For High Keats and McCarty, we did that one or one deck. So I'd like it better when they have them.
Me, too. So we'll move on to Matt to discuss their.
We hadn't really talked about it, but yeah, that's just, that was just mentioning, we did actually do a final walkthrough on the East High Street project this past Friday. So there's just a couple of little things that we need to get fixed there, but otherwise that project is finished.
So open back up, then?
Yes, it's open.
Yeah, I've been driving that in now.
Yeah.
Still think you ought to do parking just on one side because we had a travel trailer there all last week. And boy, you got a car ride across from it. And then you got a school bus that parks there every night.
We, that's a traffic control, traffic calming is what that is.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
Do you do that?
We pay those folks to sit there.
When a garbage truck takes, takes your rearview mirror off.
Well, I think the council probably want to do a little ribbon cutting to, you know, highlight what things have been accomplished, especially with the sales tax coming up. And so we'll invite you guys to that and so forth.
That's, it's, it is nice. Yeah.
Well, thank you on those items. And then Matt will talk about the future sales tax.
They brought some extra copies.
Yeah, they do have a copy of that.
All right. So a good segue into the next sales tax. I know you're all, it just passed. And so, the, we've been meeting with the council, talking about priorities. You know, one of the big things in the, in the sales tax for the city as well is the city-county project list. So it's one of the few that kind of get some names to it. Usually, they're bigger projects, maybe a little more significant to the wider community sometimes, you know, because just of their size and importance. But, and so, we try to nail it on that list. So the council's pretty much now in agreement with this list. And so, that's why I want to come up here and just chat with you guys about it. But basically, I sent this, we had a work session. We did a couple of things. We had, I don't know, several iterations, you know, a Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, then a work session about it. We've had some small, smaller meetings with various city councilmen about it. But anyway, just going back to what the original proposal was, I kind of highlighted here and read what we had talked about as, as our proposal. And then, also in blue, kind of shows where some of that, that project fits in. But just, if I could go through the list real quick. And so, basically, on here, there's $50 million worth of projects. And this is how we've done this for years. We kind of keep a running total of projects. It, they come up either through some development happens or some master plan. So we're all involved in the Campo thing. And there's a lot of projects in there as well. We've done little traffic studies or bridge studies over time. And so, we kind of categorize these things and kind of keep them all in the list. We know we're, kind of have a finite amount of money. We don't have $50 million, but we have $11 million between the two of us. And so, we try to make some priorities here. But, and just kind of going through the categories of what we suggested is looking at things. So on bridges, for example, we finished Clark and Dunkland, but we know there's some issues with the High Street Via Duck, which is the, you know, the major bridge just, you know, west of St. Peters and Truman Building. And these are placeholders. These are planning level numbers. And so, so, but we're suggesting, you know, we do a major bridge project like the High Street. Now, I know there's some debate whether it's a new bridge or a rehab, major rehab or whatever. We, I know David has contacted, Bartlett West had originally done a study back in 2010, I think it was, you know, looking at the bridge and giving us ideas of how to, how to keep it going. Just so happens, the guy who did the study is now working at Bartlett West again. So he had left. Their bridge engineer, Chris Chriswell, very good at this stuff. So we had just contacted them to kind of update that study and determine, you know, whether it's going to be another major rehab or, or does it need fully replaced. And there's some issues with ADA. There's concrete falling. You know, we've been down there chipping on it about annually. We at least do that once a year just to kind of, so it doesn't fall. We kind of get it before it falls on somebody. So if you go down there, it's pretty ugly right underneath Missouri Boulevard right now. But we're suggesting that as a, as kind of a key project in this next sales tax that we can share funds on. And then, you know, we do have Ohio Street Bridge. That's a smaller bridge. It leads to a park. We may still do that, but it's probably less significant on a countywide basis. So, you know, we're thinking we might do that. And the council's asked me a lot about that, that we may try to do that and maybe in conjunction with parks or, you know, out of our own funding. But not, we're not proposing it for the city-county pool of money. And that's with all.
How old is that High Street Via Duck?
It is, I had this number down, 50, I think 1957. The study that I had, and I forgot to bring it with me, I think, unless I did. It had the ages in there. But I think the first iteration only of High Street Bridge only lasted like, I want to say 50 years, let's say, 40 or 50. And now, we're on like 70 years of the High Street Bridge. So the second bridge they built in the late 50s, I think it was 57 or 8 is what that study tells us. So now, we're, you know, 60, 70 years later. So.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So we've got a good life out of it, actually.
It does, yeah, it's.
So.
It's bad. It's bad.
And, you know, and when we do that, kind of, you know, we'd like looked in, obviously, when we do something, we have to improve the handicap accessibility of the sidewalks, all those kind of things. The bridge railing is probably too short to meet modern standards. You know, if somebody were walking on it, it needs to be a little taller. Things like that has to, have to be upgraded to meet current standards. So that, that all plays into if you replace or major rehab or whatever, lighting as well. So then, then another thing, we typically have in city-county projects that are like intersections and corridor improvements, obviously. We probably talked about a few of those. Stadium Jefferson was probably one of our last biggies there, where we did the roundabout. But, so, so when we're looking at all these, what we have studies on in the various intersections about town, you know, we focused in on the stadium corridor where we have several, several traffic studies already completed. But if you kind of look at that subheading under there, we know there's probably almost $11 million of projects to work on to kind of build out that corridor. And I kind of liken that to how we built out together the McCarty Street corridor over time. You know, we went from downtown all the way out to the east Walmart now. You know, new corridor sidewalks. It's probably, parts of it probably need rehabbed already. But it's been going on so long. But over 20 years, we finally get that accomplished. So we have the stadium corridor. And I'm saying, we, you know, obviously, for 3 million, we can't do everything on the list, but we can make a good start at it. You know, there's ties to the Greenway. It connects all the high schools in town now and multiple schools, actually, grade school up the hill from Settwood. But updating some of the signals or looking at roundabouts, things like that, all through that corridor. So that, that's kind of talking about basically from Myrtle Street, more or less, all the way back around to Edgewood, looking, looking at that and seeing what we can do with that. If you go out there after school, a lot of kids, you know, kind of use it as a, I guess, a cross-country corridor and run up and down in the, in the street. And so, we don't have sidewalks on a good portion of that. And, but anyway, so not committing to any particular project, but we know there's a lot to do there on that corridor. I listed a bunch of other things that we worked on. And I know the county had, used to have some interest in Truman Scott Station. We did a study on that. And some of these intersections on the corridor of Ellis and, you know, around the Bald Hill Green, or Seven Hills, excuse me, and Ellis. But those, probably the traffic isn't there just yet. But, you know, those are things probably going to come up in the later sales tax at some point. And then, under the same heading, you know, I put it under two different ones. In blue there, the Monroe Street corridor, two-way rock cut issue. I know the hospital, and I forgot to tell them we're having this meeting. I've told them they came to the city council meetings about this. But they would like to see, you know, as part of their upgrades, they've been working on at the Capital Region Hospital is, you know, getting that two-way. Obviously, we had a rock cut issue that's been dragging on a long time there, close to Dunkland on Monroe Street. And then, the intersection at Dunkland and Monroe is, it's one of our, still, it's got the signal heads, you know, over on the side. There's no overhead lights there. So that could be upgraded as well. And, but anyway, we think, you know, it'd be in that million-dollar range, we could accomplish that project. And it could come out of either one of these two headings we have. But the, you know, that, that isn't a Boulevard-type construction, none of that. But it is getting the, the road two-way, getting some better lighting, some, improve the sidewalks if need be, stormwater, whatever's in the corridor. Of course, the signal and the rock cut issue would be addressed. The, it's kind of like a Grand Street in some respects, where on one side, you have a major utility line. On the other side, you have a bunch of houses that kind of crowd the right-of-way and some parking. So, you know, we'll have to be creative how we deal with that. And I know David and the group, you know, and the county, when we worked on Monroe, on the other end, at Stadium, you know, there were some little houses there. We had to take out a few. We created some parking areas there. So that way, we could leave some of the houses and still, you know, you don't want to, you know, when you go in these areas, if you take out all of the houses, that looks probably not the best. And you spend a bunch of money just taking out houses and tearing them down. Probably not the best use of, of funds. So we're going to kind of thread the needle there and figure that out. But it's probably going to end up looking like that. Some of them will have to come down. Probably some small parking areas created for what's left over. I think some of them were maybe boarded up already. So, you know, we'll be looking to, you know, bargain shop there probably. But, but yeah, that, so we're suggesting, you know, in this, in this sales tax, we could do that. And then, of course, we always get to the end, and this is where MSP has always kind of came out of, this economic development and grant matching, you know, leaving a pool of money because certainly in the next five years, we don't know what's going to happen. It could be, you know, this could be where we could end up taking money for, say, if we want to work on the Riviera Riverside area, you know, you could come out of that pool of money easily. Because that is, obviously, we have a big, big events there all the time and need, you know, that's certainly economic development, it sounds like to me. But, but something else is going to pop up. We always, you know, the railroad we've worked on and, and other incentive-type projects. Now, I went ahead in this category, listed a bunch of intersections here, and these are all on state routes, interchanges, including Clark, that we, you know, just talked about, that MODOT has it pretty good already. And they continue to have, seems like, you know, a 50% cost share project category type thing you can work with them on. A lot of communities take advantage of it. All of these interchanges are listed in our Campo group. We all participate in, and they have traffic, you know, an accident that affords them. I'm not suggesting we do any of them, but if it comes down towards the end of the sales tax and we haven't found a home for some money, if we all agreed to take one of these interchanges on, we can probably approve it. The, you know, a lot, I always say, well, people probably don't realize who maintains what, whether it's the state, county, or city. But, you know, they know it's a problem. And so, that might be something we could look at if we, if we don't have other things come up. And then, on the, the last one there, didn't include any money for it. It's kind of economic development, if you will, but some of these new and future road corridors. And so, we've talked a lot about the first two. Wildwood Extension, which is from Edgewood up. I know the county has some design put together for that. You know, there's no development on the doorstep ready to go for that. You know, a lot of times, we look at commercial development when we do these corridors. There's still plenty of available lots around town. We're creating some more over here at MSP. And so, you know, that, that's less, less of a return on investment, if you will, on something like that. And a lot of times, if there is a commercial lot, then you can have some of the TIF or some of the other acronyms, you know, chime in there and help some of those developments. But, you know, if it happened to be that a development came along, that, you know, we all got an agreement on, you still have a pool of money here to work with to, to extend roads. But same on Mission Drive. This is the one the Browns talked to us about, both groups, about a lot. And so, same idea. There's, it's very speculative at this point. There's nothing really there to be, to connect to. So when we all did the hospital together, you know, you might, the, we had a letter of credit to the hospital. The hospital gave us a letter of credit that said, okay, if we don't actually occupy this building in the end, we're giving you your money back on these road corridors. And so, they, they were a not-for-profit, obviously, so they didn't have the advantage of trying to get a TIF or something like that, or TDD or whatever the other, you know, things are. And so, that's, that's why that was done that way. And we're able to get the interchange in. But again, another expensive corridor. We have it on a master plan. So I include it on here because we talk about it. A lot of people talk to us about it and you guys. But those are kind of relative planning numbers to, to make that happen. The other one, Militia Drive on the east end out by Liberty Road. I know when the state had changed some crossovers and things and some access out there, there was some discussion about that. We left it on the list. I've talked to Jeff about this a little bit as well offline. But, but basically, they, you know, that traffic movement, you know, works pretty much the same as it would. There's no necessarily any development at the doorstep ready to go there. If there were, there's always those TIFs and, you know, TDDs and all that stuff available if it's commercial development. The only issue with all these corridors, I haven't pointed out, is there's no necessarily utilities in the area that, so a lot of utility extensions would have to happen. Sometimes, as much as the roadway work would have to happen. We typically wouldn't pay for those out of, well, I know you guys wouldn't because it's road and bridge money. It just have to be a special deal. So like on the east end, you know, where Militia Drive is, there's all the lots available through the chamber. There is, those utilities do exist over there next to those current developments. So still, plenty of lots available if somebody wanted to locate there. So that's kind of how we view those. Doesn't mean that if something came along that everybody was in agreement, just need a little money to get going. You couldn't take it out of this pool of money, but we'd all have to be in agreement. And I foresee, you know, something of the nature of kind of the way the hospital was done, that, you know, if you don't actually do it, you got to pay us back. And letter credits are pretty good for that, that regard. Because, basically, it's just a bank note ready to pay us cash. So. But that, that's kind of the, in a nutshell, what the proposal is, kind of what's in red and blue on this deal. If you guys are in agreement, I'll take that back to the city. They'll probably pass some kind of resolution that this is what we're focused on. And then they'll get out and try to sell the sales tax from, you know, committees being formed and all that to promote it and things like that. So. If you have to answer your questions.
I've got a question about the Wildwood Extension. The county already has the right-of-way for that?
Yes.
And they've already have the plans for that?
95% plans, which means a little work and they can be right a bit.
Yeah. I, I think it, perhaps that separates it a little bit from the other items on, that are contained there. And, and I think it's got a, it's, it's long in the tooth. Maybe a dozen years old already. And if it's, doesn't happen in this five, you know, we're approaching 20 years from the time we sunk costs for engineering and land acquisition. So maybe just a comment, I, I hear you when you talk about the letter of credit. You have to have the, you have to have sugar daddy that comes along and says, I want that spot and I'm willing to contribute to make this road happen. And that, no, no one has stepped up yet.
Correct.
Same thing on Mission Drive West.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and just to, so that if you, if somebody asks you about having the plans already and all that, you know, it's good that we do have a plan in place. And yours is probably a little more definite than the, maybe the, the Mission Drive Extension, although we have some preliminary alignments ready. And that's if a developer does come along. We know that. And that's if a developer does come along, we know that, hey, we need a road from A to B to make this whole loop work. And so we figured that out, David's group and then probably Eric's been in on it, figuring out where those need to be. And so, you know, if you wanted to build a piece of that or try to do a development, you said, okay, you gotta get from A to B because we know this road needs to eventually end up over at Mission Drive long-term. And so that's why having those plans in place is a good thing. I would say as far as that corridor and that specific area, you know, we're having a lot of movement on developments along Edgewood right now. It, you know, it just happened and I think the, you know, and I, I don't know this for a fact, but I think the Kaufmans are a little more trying to market their property a little harder these days. And so you have the surgery center going in. You have now America Care, America Care just got approved last night for like a assisted living, pretty big assisted living facility right off Edgewood there on the Kaufman Farm as well. So a little greenway extension, you know, is planned through there, things like that. So there's some movement there, taking up some of those. I know the school is also working with us. We've swapped some properties and they're going to have a, another road that comes down out of their facility off Fairgrounds and come down to Edgewood. So there's, once those things start happening along Edgewood, you get that filled back in, you know, then the next logical step, if you're going to continue to develop, is to kind of start pushing out in these corridors we're talking about. And so having those plans in place is a good thing.
The termination of Mission and, and Wildwood, is, is that a state road up there? CC? No.
No.
That's county.
Rock Ridge.
Rock Ridge, okay.
It's Old Route C, but it's county.
Old C, but it's not state anymore?
No.
Okay.
How close is the water tower? It's right. Right in that vicinity?
Right.
Get a bearings on it from that.
Someone drafted a, a roundabout for that?
There actually, it is designed as a roundabout, yes.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So I guess my ask is, is the county good with this list? If so, if you could vote to say you're in favor of it or whatever, so I can take that back to the city council and then they have some comfort level that you're on board with kind of these, these corridors and these categories, if you will.
I think it's a good start.
Yeah.
We've got some other places too, that if we have something, like you said, somebody comes to the table and has some kind of development ready to go in a certain area, we can make changes as we see fit. So I mean, it's hard to look into that crystal ball five years from now, but I think it's a good start.
I agree.
I'm okay with that.
So we just need to make a motion.
Do you want a motion?
I would, I would like one, you know, and what it does also, so what, having a motion, you know, our sales tax starts in April, so what'll happen is you'll see this guy again, probably not me, but maybe both if you want. But, you know, we'll, we'll start designs on a couple of these projects. And so, you know, we don't want to get off track, maybe like we did on the Clark thing. We hope not to repeat that. That's the only time I can recall that's happened where we kind of started something and then just stopped it and kind of spent some money maybe we wish we had back. You know, we hate not to do that, but we would, we'd come back and say, okay, we're ready. We've got a consultant on the High Street thing. Of course Eric will be involved with that and we'll get that design started. Because, you know, this is time to get the design and some of that going. This could take a while to get in place to do this project. Same with something, we'll pop up with something on Stadium, this menu, and we'll try to get some designs going and so we have a project that we can actually do. Some of these take a long time to actually happen, you know, once you say go, you know, so.
Yeah, but on that Clark thing, there's a lot of things that changed over that time and, you know, you hate to throw that money away, but we weren't too far down in a rabbit hole to go and spend this money on something that wasn't needed. So I think it was just made, so times change, things change. A lot of people are looking at, you know, building houses right now and all of a sudden the price of lumber shot up and stuff, so, you know, you put things on hold for a little while.
Sure.
Things happen and it's just common sense prevails, hopefully in the end, it happens. So I'm making a motion, we support the potential projects with Jefferson City presented today for sales tax a page.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. See you later.
Commission comments. Bids and contracts, approval and contract signing of Soul Source 2021-SS12 Stryker.
This Soul Source is already ran in the paper, so we just need your approval on it. It's for Lucas CPR devices. And then we also have the contract, which is for $5,724 for the year.
This is for the maintenance on these, for five of these units. We'll have another five coming up here shortly because they were bought five, five, and one. We actually have 11 of them. So this would be the, the maintenance agreement where they come in and do the yearly checks on them, they change the batteries in them, and then they're under, under continuous care. If we have a problem with them, we can call them and they'll come out.
How long has that been in to go before?
This one's just for a year, but it was for five total.
Okay.
And it started last year.
These are those Cadillac stretchers?
No, these are the, these are the CPR devices. These are, so if we're out and we run a code and we have return of, of heartbeat or return of whatever we need to do. If we've got somebody we're going to transport to the hospital and they need CPR, we can put this mechanical device on them and it will do adequate CPR on the way to the hospital.
That's a Lucas device, right?
That's a Lucas.
Yeah, we, we.
And they're made by Stryker.
We were way ahead of the game. I think Osage County just now added Lucas to their ambulances, so they, they are a lifesaver.
Motion to approve and sign the contract, Soul Source 2021-SS12-Stryker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business?
I think we just got that.
Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I know, or payable and count payable pending review.
Motion to approve count's payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reading of budget adjustment number nine.
Okay, this is the first reading, no action today. This is for $17,621.34. This is actually for EMS and the water damage that was done out there to that back shed facility during the freezing. So no action today, but I do have a transfer that will have to go along with the deductible on that, so.
So this will be whenever they get ready to approve that or we have to do the deductible now?
Either way, you can do it, wait, or you can just sign the transfer, but this thing won't happen until 10 days from now.
We pay the deductible whenever we approve that.
We, we started to pay some of the bills already, so.
Okay.
Okay. Reading the, first reading of budget adjustment number 10.
This is for $3,460. This is the law enforcement and this is a grant, so let's see what that is. Homeland Security, reversible grant.
CTO.
CTO. No action today, we'll hold it for 10 days.
Okay. Posse office bill funding transfer.
It's a, this is a transfer for $10,300.56 for the building of that posse room. It needs to come out of the industry fund.
So we talked about this a long back, about doing that and then moved the office over there too, so.
Moving Jessica over some. And a helicopter.
Temporary.
Not temporary, it's already been talked about. She's my employee.
Yeah, I, I think a Blackhawk would be really neat.
She's my employee nowadays.
Sam's not even arguing for you, he's all about the helicopter.
Yeah.
So you want to go ahead and approve the organizational chart while we're at it, then share?
I've already got it done.
Sam's, Sam's got it on her with the helicopter. So, yeah, I'm finding what the transfer for the posse office bill is.
Just take a motion.
Do we need a motion?
You're, I don't think you need to vote on it, it's just to, just making sure you know about it.
Okay, we know about it.
In case we had any questions about it, man.
Okay. Discussion of Cole County Health Department door.
Hello.
Morning.
For some time we've been having problems with door number two, as the sheriff labeled it. It's the employee entrance on the west side of the building and it won't stay last, it won't stay locked. That's the one we, we have locked all the time, so people can't just walk in. So Jordy came out last week and was looking at it and noticed that when you actually like pull up on the door, the whole wall around the door frame moves. So it was suggested that we have someone come look at it to work on the door frame and install a new door and frame and new door hardware. So we did get three bids, two bids that were attached to an email. So we were just looking to get that door replaced because we do need to have it locked and shut all day long, every day.
Kind of timeframe we got on this, as far as getting the material number one and then getting it put in and.
Did they tell you that?
They went over that.
Yeah, I don't think.
He said it won't be like real quick, so probably a couple of weeks to get everything in. Is it where everything is? 10 to 14 days with the words and then you start everything?
Yeah, I figured it'd be longer than that.
I think it's important.
Yeah, we're just trying to be, make sure, everybody pushes it, make sure it shuts really good, but.
Yeah.
Don't we usually get three bids for these kind of things? I'm just trying to think if we got anybody else, or rather than some more phone bids and see if we got anybody else interested. Did you talk to anybody else, Jordy?
No, I talked to these two.
Brady's didn't answer when I called.
Yeah, I was saying Brady's didn't answer, I tried calling them too.
If you have any other suggestions, I, I will call them.
Well, we already got these amounts here, kind of, I don't know if that's fair to anybody else, so they can see these amounts, they're open record now.
We have this from you in an email, is that right?
Yeah, and I.
I have paper copies.
I would be happy to go with GBH. I think they were considerably less and they've done work for us, so that would be my recommendation.
I think that when I read this the other day, that's, that was my individual decision at that point. So I will make a motion to accept the GBH builders' general contractors' bid to, for the health department door of 4,000, no, I'm sorry, yes, $4,558.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I just think we should have got more bids, so, sorry. I don't think it's a bad price, so I think it's fair. And they have done work for us, I agree, but I think we should have got more bids. So just in the future, I think we need to get at least three bids and get either a third one that, I don't know, either says, no, I'm not interested in bidding it, or something to that effect. You know, Brady's didn't answer your call back or whatever, but, so, all right.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Did you want a little COVID thing? I was just canceling.
Yes, please.
Give them one last night, so, I'm trying to think of what I started with. So I had counted, last seven days, we've had 19 positive cases reported to us, so truly good. The state website shows that we have like 35.4% of Cole County residents who have initiated vaccination. I did learn over the last week or so that that number's not exactly accurate because the facilities, the vaccinators that are receiving vaccines through the federal pharmacy program aren't always putting their vaccinations that they're giving into the Show Me Vax state database. So our vaccination rate is actually higher than that, which is a really great thing. So like the VA hospital, some of the big box stores, their information is not being dumped into Show Me Vax, so.
Will, will that get updated later?
The, the state's trying to get the data.
Okay.
So that would cause me to believe that our community immunity is actually much higher than what we think because, you know, you count the people who already had COVID and then you count the people who've got vaccines, so I think we're doing very well. There has been some inquiries lately about breakthrough infections, so we did look back at our data and from the 360 cases we've had since February 1st, seven people were showing in Show Me Vax as having both doses of the vaccine before they tested positive because we know that the vaccine doesn't prevent you from getting it, it just, you know, prevents you from having a more severe case of it. So, but I know in another county, they did have people who were fully vaccinated get COVID-19 and be hospitalized. So, you know, everybody's different. I think that people just need to consult with their doctor if they have questions or they're worried about, you know, the vaccine or worried about the, the virus or, or anything. At the mall site, I think as the supply is increasing, demand is decreasing statewide, nationwide. So at the mall site, the first week we did about 1,600 vaccinations, the second week we did like 741, and last week we did 346. So this week they're doing second doses for the first week and then they're also open for first doses. I think we did like 66 first doses yesterday. May 24th, we are going to go down to two days a week, but Thursdays they are staying open until 6:00 to try to, we, we did get some feedback that like high school students that are 16 and 17, if they want that Pfizer vaccine, you know, it's hard for them to get there by 3:30. And some of the other pharmacies in town like Walmart and Walgreens, I think they have Moderna and J&amp;J, and that's only good for people that are 18 and up. So Pfizer's really the only one those 16 and 17-year-olds could have, but Hy-Vee does have it and Hy-Vee's been doing vaccines seven days a week from 7:00 to 6:00. So there's other places in town and I think that's why our demand is going down and, like I said, I also think there's.
Does Gerbs have it now?
Gerbs has it now too, but I don't know, not sure which vaccine they have. And they are doing the antibody testing there, which is I think something that we should explore because I think some people, you know, would like to have their antibodies tested to know if they have it.
Would we want to go to the high school and?
I reached out to them at the last meeting and they were not interested in hosting a vaccination event, so.
Who in county is, I'm surprised.
Do we consider, or are considering the antibody test since we've got the, you know, we got a place and so on and so forth?
So we don't have the machine to do the rapid test, we would have to invest in that. We can send, we can do a blood draw at the health department and send it off to LabCorp, you know, and have it done, but it's a little bit more expensive than that rapid test machine that does the 15-minute test.
Which isn't quite as reliable?
Actually, I was with someone who got their antibodies tested at Gerbs the other day and they said it was in the, the 90s of reliability, so it is very accurate, actually.
And the terminology breakthrough, the definition is?
They've been fully vaccinated.
Positive after fully vaccinated?
Two weeks after that, the second dose, so they should have their full immunity and, or have the vaccine.
So do you later then track the severity of those patients or does anyone track that? So even though it sounds bad to get it after you've been vaccinated, but if it was almost that, you know, asymptomatic?
Well, I would hope that the doctors and the hospitals are tracking that because we don't always know when somebody's been hospitalized. You know, early on we were doing contact tracing, we would know because we would call and they'd be like, oh, they're in the hospital. Or sometimes it would, it would get reported as they were hospitalized, but we don't always know. People don't always circle back and tell us how severe it is, but we might be able to follow up with the hospitals. And I wanted to ask them too, I think on Monday, Cap Region had two people in the hospital and St. Mary's had one over the weekend, it was zero. I wanted to, I want to ask them if they are tracking the vaccination status of those individuals that are being hospitalized for COVID.
So when do we go down to two days a week?
We're thinking the week of May 24th. And then, as you know, the National Guard is revising their strategy and I, I'm pretty sure we're going to lose guard support at that facility starting June 1st.
Could the courts, I know, yeah, there was an article, I think in today's paper where the courts are talking about using the Miller Center for jury selection. Could the courts use?
Of course.
Use that, that space out there, the three days that you're not using it?
Of course.
Okay, so I might reach out to Judge Beadham and, because I would think at the Miller Center, we're probably going to be paying the schools to use that.
And it's all set up with chairs and.
Yeah, okay.
So the only comments I've heard are the hours, so what is Walgreens and Walmarts' hours? Are they doing after hour stuff where some of the people maybe that can't get there between?
Well, I know Hy-Vee is, I was there Sunday morning at 9:15 after church and they had people sitting there doing seven days a week from 7:00 to 6:00. I don't know what Walgreens and Walgreens out, Walmart.
All right, well, that answered my question with Hy-Vee doing it and then.
But we're going to start, they are going to start staying open on Thursday nights until 6:00 at the mall site.
So they have access to it?
Yes.
I think some of the other comments were people that can't necessarily get to it even though it is on a bus route and easily accessible. Are we doing the community health center?
So the community health center went to the Joshua House last Thursday. They were there for eight hours and they did four vaccines. The week before that, JCMG went to a building community bridges event at Miller Park and they were there all day and they did eight vaccines. The community health center, thanks to Sheila, who's, this suggested we worked with the mobile food pantry and the community health center is going to take the mobile unit to all the mobile food pantries that are going to be in Cole County in May.
Okay.
And then if someone is homebound, they can call that Aging Best number, which I don't have a memorized, I have the other numbers. And our Cole County EMS will get vaccines from us and deliver it to their home. Of course, the list of like 25 people that we got were homebound the other day when EMS called them, all but five of them had got to a clinic and had got their vaccine, but EMS is reaching out to them and they were going to deliver the other vaccine. So if people have challenges, there's a way to get it if they want it.
Yep, that was the only thing I really had any questions about or that had been approached about and it's been addressed.
Yeah, it's been a good project, you know. Yeah, we had, well, and, you know, the community there, our partners are helping us out the site and then the ones that have the ability to go out and do are going out and doing. So if people want it, you know, and then like we have these adaptable vaccine teams right now from the National Guard and they're doing an event at Central Bank on Friday and they have like 33 people registered. So we have a lot of resources if, if people are interested. I guess the Missouri Chamber of Commerce must have sent a solicitation out for those type of business events. And that's when Central contacted me since I'm the regional implementation team for, lead for Region F. And so we paired them up with a National Guard team that's going to be down at the financial center on Friday.
Cool.
Okay, that's the bank that had, I knew we had one bank that, that's good, okay.
I don't have anything else.
Nor do I.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Kristi.
Thanks, Kristi. Okay, do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
I don't like so. Go for it. You're ready.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Personnel issues, Section 610.021, Para N13, closed para N. And existing or proposed security systems, Section 610.021, Para N19, closed para N.
Second.
Earl, call.
Eric.
Aye.
Sam.
Yes.